This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Our question right on the agenda is for Georgia Jones and Peter Swarx. Do you have your floor?
Yes.
Hi.
Stay here or come up here whenever you like. Feel yourself comfortable.
I'm Georgia Jones and we're here, Peter and I are here to ask you for permission to put a building, a small building on the Village Ball Field site. When my son Jeffrey died this summer, the shoreowners and a number of other people gave quite a bit of money to the, to a fund for his memorial, which is at the Ed Romick Foundation. And it's called the Fund for Placid Lake Protection Fund. And the line number is Jeffrey Walmer Education Fund. So we wanted to put the, a small lean-to building with, not the full size, big thing. And it would be a place for the lake stewards, for one place, for them to sit. They would now sit at card tables in the rain, sun, wind, you name it. So this would be a place for them to sit. So it would be, it would probably give them some cachet to sit at a place like that.
Excuse me, at the Village Ball Lunch?
The Village Ball Lunch site.
On Lake Placid.
On Victor River.
And it would require no sewage, no water, no electricity. And it would be paid for by the fund from the Shoreowners Association. And it would have a small sign that probably would say "In memory of Jeffrey Walmer." And that would probably be, you know, most of it. I think that would be all it would be. And it would be primarily an educational opportunity for people with concerns about the lake and the rules and regs to pick up rack card sized things that they, would be easy for them to look at. We would put, probably take the D E C rules for the lake. And anything legitimately that other people would like to add to that for, for the education. That place, the lake actually, for all of us in my family. We've owned our place since 1894. And so we're very invested in Lake Placid Lake. And it was Jeffrey's spiritual home. That was family. And so I hope you'll give that consideration. And Peter can tell you all about what it's gonna be.
I haven't got any formal drawing, just sketching. But it would be a lot like the dugouts down at the ball fields. You know, similar.
Chris Law.
And open front. We don't want to close it. I'd make it sort of movable. It'd make it, it'd be about 70 square feet. That's all it is. So I might even show you a permit. Anything under 100 square feet used to be.
I think you'll need a permit, but you won't need any, like if it's over 100 square feet, there's a 50-foot setback from the lake.
Yeah, that's, yeah. And, you know, we do our natural materials, probably brainstorm. Try and make it light. Because you could move it. You could move it out in that unseasonal situation. I'd make it so it go right on the trailer. It wouldn't be over width. So you could easily move it. Put it on skids.
Is that what the ones at the ball field are, 70 square feet, or are they bigger?
Oh, they're bigger.
Okay.
Let's see, we're not talking any of them. The length there is, I was talking something, it was like 10 feet by 7. There's a little grassy area to the left of the.
Right where you'd want.
There's a little grassy area that would sit very nicely.
Are there setback issues?
No.
Like down to Lansing's? I believe because it's that small, we would, we'd have to look into it. I believe it would.
At some point, in 1973, I get a Creole sense, since I worked for the state, the Fishery Department. And we had built a portable building. And I sat in that every day in the summer. Go around the lake, count the fishermen, and then check the fish. And they did that at the public, at the state lunch. It was the same sort of, now it wasn't a lean-to looking thing, but it was just, and it was about four by six. It had lots of work. That one did. But this would be open. At least it'd get out of the rain. People would come and ask for questions.
A lean-to would fit into the, that's correct. A lean-to would fit into the establishment.
Oh, thank you. We'd do a brainstorm, probably stay in dark. We would. It'd be similar. They've got a couple of storage sheds now at, you know, what they call, I think it's Greg Peacock's place. It used to be the Swedish wine place.
Oh, definitely.
If you see, look for the wood sheds. Would be similar to this.
Okay.
As far as any concerns about vandalism or that kind of thing. If you spend a lot of time there, which I do, because we have two boat slips at Captain Martin's or at Lansing's. And it's amazing how little litter and things are. And the village has a garbage tank, a garbage pail here. And it's picked up randomly. And it's very, very rare that we find anything. Because the shoreowners go in and out of there fairly often and talk to the stewards and. So we just thought it would be a great educational tool for, for the lake. And there's some talk coming up about a video that would be available to just run on circuit in there. And it would be, there would be five people, I think, who would speak briefly. One of them is Megan Hopier, who is the D E C ranger person. And Zach Horrocks, who would speak about the fishing on the lake and the rules and regs about that. And Roger Smith, who owns Camp Carolina down at the east end, northeast end it will be. Would speak about the recreational opportunities and how to use them and not misuse them. So that is in the, in the works, but certainly not going to happen right away. But that would be another educational tool that would be made available.
Would you hope to have this, this season? Would you hope to have the lease for this season?
Yeah.
Move it right away.
We don't get it.
I didn't want to do a formal plan because I didn't know what your decision would be.
The, I've done some asking about this. And the three concerns that I've had. One is taking up too much space. And I don't think that's an issue, because I looked there the other day. And what you're talking about, the size, this isn't an issue. If it looks like a lean-to, are we going to have problems with keeping people camping in?
No.
How do you know?
Well, because the stewards will be there.
At night?
They would see somebody moving in.
At night?
Secondly, their cars parked there and all kinds of sleeping.
If you build a lean-to, that's what you're usually for. That, that's a concern. And then the other one is kids going in there using it to party. You built a nice shelter in case it's raining or whatever.
There are part better ones next door over at Captain Martin's. If they want to hang out, there's an awful lot more opportunity at Captain Martin's right next door to it, so.
We could put, we could put doors on there. We talked about that.
Well, you know, you could put ones that can drop down.
Flop down or even fold back. And then you could lock it at night.
That would, that would take away all the three of the concerns I have. I'd still like to go out and just look at that space now that I know the size you're thinking, but I, from what I've.
It's on my left. It's on the margin.
Yeah, I don't think that'd be a problem there.
Nice little grassy area. It measures like seven by.
I can assure you that, I can assure them that if this is okay, that the site that it's going to be on will look far better than it does now.
Well, it's a, it's a dirt lot, a little bit of dust and a lot of light.
Find some flowers and then lawn will get mowed. And we'll take care of that part of it so that it's, you know, presentable and looks good. So I hope that's, any other questions?
That's my question for you guys. Any other questions?
Let's just check about the setback. It's not an issue.
Yeah, that would have to be adjusted.
Yeah.
I think if 15 feet.
Look at Mike.
That I don't know.
Well, you put it on the, on the fence, right? On the property line, on the.
Like, circle it up near it. It should be, it would be within a couple of feet of the fence.
Well, we have to talk to COVID.
Wouldn't need any.
You got the, you got the pole, poles for the power.
Power's down there. I don't know if we need power.
No, you don't need power, but you have, they're in the way, sort of, unless you go toward the lake.
No, they're not in the way of helping, not there.
Peter, I went up there with Brad just the other day when I got home Friday, and we took a look. And he said, no, that would be a good spot. Especially because of the power.
And it would, it's oriented towards the parking lot and the road a little bit because of the prevailing winds of westward. So then the rain, rain will be blowing right in.
If you could talk and make sure that it's legal to do what you want to do. And I'll talk. And I'll go up there with Brad and take a look at the spot. And we could, I suppose, have the option of trying and see if we have problems with camping or whatever. Put in a grate like you're talking, or you could just put it in the beginning to keep people out of there. Leave that to you.
We can do that. We talked about that already. So that it isn't, it isn't used for that.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions?
We could always have the police patrol every once in a while, since they're able to go up in the neighborhood and tip the people who are parking down the street overnight. Try by the ball launch to see if anyone's there.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a plaque in honor of Jeffrey Walmer or something like that.
I'm gonna talk.
The, the police sit there all the time on Victor River. If you, you drive in and out of there, you will see the police car on the Lansing side most of the time.
I'm good. We'll get, if you can find out if it's legal to put it there.
So just check with Mike.
I would think and see what he says about the, on D E C.
Legal from, from home.
Do you need a building permit, that kind of thing? Do we, do we have?
Well, you would have to okay that it's on your, my property.
Yeah, right. If it has to meet setbacks, then you're into the middle of the driveway.
And then, yeah, then you get.
Then you got problems.
Almost can't do it.
Yes, I guess, I guess, I guess what's legal is go with, under the context that we're going to approve it, what the requirements are.
We'll go up and talk to Mike.
And just see if he thinks there's a problem with the D E C. But I think because you're keeping it 70 square feet, I don't think it'd be good to have him tell you.
No. You have to go to the C B A.
40 square feet is not so permanent.
You write on somebody's property.
Yeah, just see what he has to say. And I'll, I'll, I'll go back up there again with Brad and take a look at the spot and do the math. So it's 10 feet wide, 7 feet deep?
About, that's, I think that works. That even works.
I think that's what we are.
I made it smaller. When I first taught you, we had it even smaller than that, but.
We expanded it a little. There's no sense making it too small, because then it, then it's not useful, so it. And you know that Peter will do a beautiful job, because he always. And we'll talk, I'll talk to Mike. And we can go to the review board if necessary. They've seen a lot of lean-tos.
You don't want a, you don't want a formal drawing, but I'll do it now. I didn't know what the decision was, so I didn't.
Yeah, once, once you talk to Mike and everything is good, I'll get up there. I'll do my best to get up there as quick as I can. And I just got a bad week coming up. And then just use Anita for your point personally.
I know, thanks. There's a glass door, so it's a tumble.
Thank you.
You wouldn't be the first.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Beautiful place.
Thanks.
Okay. So. Oh, yeah. Under court right on the side. First one is regular board meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Sorry. Any corrections or questions on that? Board meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, proposed local law 2022 to land code amendments. That's the one that we did. And then it had to go through the county. And we had to go through Tim Smith. And Tim is back to us. And now it's all set. Waiting my signature. I just need a motion to tell me to sign it.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for all the work on that. Thank you, Jackie. I'm sure you have many, I think you're up to years on that one now, aren't you?
Yeah.
Item C, behavioral health services north employee assistance service agreement.
I had a question about it. What is that?
So this is something we offer all our employees. I think a number of the larger area employers do. I've worked for three different places that offer this. You're nodding, so I'm guessing Orta offers this.
Yes, employees assistance pro, E A P. Yes. And so, and she's still going nutty. She'll have a place. No, no, I mean, you know.
That's one thing for it, yes.
Can board members do this?
What?
Well, we know that.
I'm talking to H R Gold now. I'm going to get a lot of praise in here. So, no, wait, if there's a. Wait, I mean, if there are personal issues. I mean, it's important.
No, it is.
Oh, yeah. So I mean, if you're going through some personal problems.
Since we've had it in the past, it's been, whatever.
Okay, so here's the thing. I don't know how many people use it proactively. But the other thing it's for is if we need to send someone, we do. And we have sent people. In the past few months, we've sent two people. So, yeah.
And it, it is kind of confidential. It's out there. So, I mean, you're not supposed to know.
Right, exactly.
That's why I wonder, because I know we've had something like this in the past.
Well, I don't know.
We've had it for a number of years. But see, behavioral health services just took it over from E A S. So I think they've made it more, they, they're the ones who provide this long contract. I never found a contract before in our files. Like, when it was E A S, we just, every year they asked us, do you want to re-up? But we said yes, and we sent it. But this is the first time they've made such a formal contract in my time.
Minimum dollar amount? We have to spend none of that?
It's a per person amount.
Yeah, but I mean, if you don't use any, they don't charge us. I haven't, I didn't see that.
They, they charge you. It's an amount for the year.
It's like insurance.
Right.
You don't use it, you still gotta pay for it anyway.
The other things they offer are, I know a few years back, Kimball and I attended a course with them for managers to be able to tell if you need to send somebody for, for testing, like to, if you're suspicious. If you're suspicious of drinking or substance abuse on the job. So they have all sorts of courses for managers. We don't use that many of their courses, because many of the same things suffer by PERMA. But, I mean, I think that they're worthwhile for us. I think in the cases where you need them, you need them. And then you want them to be available. It's not an exorbitant amount of money. I want to say it's like $55 an employee for the year.
So were you just asking if you were, would you do that?
Your employee.
Need it privately after.
Yes, I, sorry, I don't.
He did. And our only, our only concern was they didn't use our legal name. She applied to change. Legally Placid Lake, Placid Lake, Placid Lake throughout. So with that change, we're asking for it to be approved.
Are we not eligible for the state E A P?
I, I don't know. This is, like, I came into, I inherited this. We haven't looked into any other. I could. Why does Orta have something else?
The state has an E A P, Employee Assistant Program. And it's run basically the same way. I will look into it and see, I mean, by all means, sign this, because I think it's important. You know, but.
But maybe in the future.
Yeah, going forward, maybe.
If we have.
Flop out.
Yeah, to compare programs. I mean, they help you with, you know, spouses that are going through, you know, Alzheimer's. It's a marvel. If it's used, it's a marvelous program.
Right.
And we should let more employees know that this is.
Well, every new employee, they get a pamphlet on. We tell them they can use it.
It used to be too. I know when I first started here, there was like a newsletter, whatever.
Oh, yeah, that still comes with the pay stubs. I don't know how many people open their pay stubs. But Tracy puts them in once a month. That was the other.
But it has like a different, I don't know.
Topic, yes, you're right.
Topic or whatever in that, you know, maybe affecting people.
Well, mental health is, like, stigma is being, I'm glad that stigma is being, like, removed from that. And then providing this service seems beneficial and reasonable.
I'll make the motion to approve the agreement.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
So pass. Okay. Now we have the item D is from Police Department resignation letter. It's short and it's simple. It's from Brian Bowles. His regret that I resigned my position as parking control officer. It's been a great, great pleasure to serve, work for this department. As you all know, this is Bucky. I just heard he's been here almost two years. He has been a great asset. He did the job diligently and faithfully. It will be sadly. So do I have a motion to approve his resignation? If you don't, don't do it. We can't let him go. We've tried that in the past.
Do we have anyone to replace him?
I have a, I have, yes, but no viable.
Okay.
I shouldn't say none. There's a couple chuckers.
Two and a half seconds.
I'll make it second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have the Electric Department letter of resignation.
So.
Second.
Probably should read it. But let me just, just throw it out for the record that Troy Jakes. He's been, well, his last day will be 6/3/2022. He's been with us quite a while. He's been a good asset, a good employee, and we'll be sorry to have you leave us left. But we have a first and a second. And we wish him well. All in favor?
Aye.
So passes. Okay. Yeah, Department of Public Works promotion. Well, yes, I do. I did not talk to Kimball, but I'm sure he's.
I'm sure he's.
Very happy to. Do we want to at this time also allow Kimball to put out, to hire a person to replace Troy?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
The question is, I mean, since we're losing a journeyman, shouldn't we look for a journeyman, like seek out?
We discussed that. The answer was no.
With Kimball?
Yes, I did. It was his suggestion to hire someone.
I had the same conversation with him.
Yeah.
I asked that same question.
I think it has something to do with personality in the department. If you wrap somebody in.
It depends who somebody is.
Yes, yes.
I think the big thing is.
Also trying to find somebody.
Yeah, it's probably not gonna happen.
I think the big thing is that Kimball knows how many men he has, and if he can make what he needs done. And that was his recommendation. So I'm good with it. So we have a first. Do we have a second?
Second. So, let me hear it. It's not the hiring that I have a problem with. It's, it's just.
It's one job.
Again, you, you could advertise we could get no money, or we could have a personality problem. It's more, it's riskier going that way. But then we would have journeyman then if we were successful, which is risky. Anyway, it's, this says that there's nothing to do with, I don't know, not our.
But this point, it just puts out so that he can't hire somebody.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed. Question?
Absolutely. I don't know. I feel like I was, my medication's wearing off, so I was thinking, well, six, seven things.
So maybe it's kicking in.
Yeah, yeah. Never mind. I'm just gonna move on. This TV's too big. I'm gonna move it on myself, so.
Okay. Item G is MEUA County Workshop, May 9th through the 11th.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Second.
Anyone want to know what it is?
I read the minutes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, MEUA County Workshop, May 9th through the 11th.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
H, child passenger safety certification, 25th, May 25th. As we said, we aren't sure how you'd spend six hours with child safety seat. But if you've ever tried putting one in, maybe there is a big trip to it. They can't take a lot. And that's Officer Durrell that we're going to send.
Well, they bring the state police in and it is quite a production.
Very good.
It is six hours. I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I love the kind of safety seat too. My God, there's 900 different kinds now. Ones that turn into strollers and ones that go into bases and it's a mess. Way too many options.
Okay, so H passes. Item I is what we did last year, the Lake Placid High School class, senior class banners. We have talked with Kimball, is my understanding. And he says.
He's very enthusiastic to make it happen.
And what we did last year seemed to work for the horse show and everything else. Do I have a motion to approve the banners?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Anything else to comment from court tonight?
No, there is none.
Okay. Guessing, just a wild guess, that's Jack and his. Thank you very much.
Boy, I don't know.
Yep.
I was here early to try.
He was, yes. I was here early to try.
Do I have a motion to approve warrant affidavit number 18?
So.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And then item B, senior water rate exemptions. I can fumble through that a little bit. Or would you like me to start from and you'll pick up my pieces?
I can do it. So every year, anybody who has a large sewer account, and we offer a senior rate. You have to have a specific income requirement in order to get that rate. You're also supposed to have a house that is assessed at less than $300,000. There will be another conversation at a workshop about making some modifications to these.
We have that issue that specific because of, the prices are coming up, we're targeting those.
Yes. And every year, we have people that are just under the wire. They're just, you know, just off. There are four applications. There's one more that hasn't come in yet, but we're aware of that are just beneath the requirement. This one's just over the max amount of income. The assessed value is $329,000 on this one. I'll let you look through them.
So you know the new assessments just went out?
Oh, yes, I know.
All right.
And they're appearing. We're, we're, one of my requests at the next admin meeting will be to increase the assessed value.
The bottom line is, is the $300,000 house is no longer selling for that. It's selling like for more than five.
Yes, right.
And the four people are there getting caught in this.
So these people are either just over the max income wise, or their assessed value on their home. And if you look at the addresses, you'll know where a lot of them are, that kind of, one of them's on Hillgrass. It's not worth what it's assessed. And then the other issue that we have is if your, if your finances or your home isn't a trust, it's not supposed to be accepted as a senior water sewer rate. The person who lives there is still paying all the bills, still the regular homeowner. Their income meets the requirements. Their home value meets the requirement.
State plan.
Yeah. So you can take a look at these, but as long as everyone's okay with it, I'd like to allow them to continue to get the senior rate. They currently have the senior rate.
Would anyone get a senior if they wanted?
I would, but do we need to make modify, I mean, we, do we need to make modifications to it?
We can, we can pass these through. It's entirely up to the board. These can get passed through for this year, and then we will make modifications to the application for next year's. These were the only ones that came in that, you know, we had any issues with.
So the modifications need to be based upon what we approved?
We're just approving that these people did.
This is the normal exemption process. So every year when we do water sewer, senior rates.
Remove her, um, blocks from her corner. Oh, this is, is that the stone one?
Yeah. So every year, there's a couple that fall right in that gray area. And we decide whether or not we allow them to keep the rate or not. These are the ones that fall in that gray area. We are gonna modify the form going forward to increase some things. But it won't take effect until next year. Because the way home values are going up, $300,000 is not, especially in Placid.
And the ones that went over only went over like $20,000.
We had one that was, it was $110,000 over, but it's because of where the house is.
In a last work, town workshop that went on, it was a very Mayor Randall-like meeting from 2:30 to almost eight. Todd, Todd Anthony had mentioned that the average residential level, 11%, but he had just mentioned that it could climb next year even more. So we're gonna be facing the same issue.
Right.
Well, but at least this way, we don't have to stop these people from getting it while we try to change the parameters. Gives us time to think on it for sure.
The dollar amount is set by the county. We, we get that dollar amount from the accessory office. Because that's where their senior tax rate lands. So we try and stick around that. But as far as the housing rate and whether or not things are in a trust, every, you know, as you get older and you do estate planning, generally to protect your, your assets, you put things into a trust. So that shouldn't necessarily negate somebody from receiving water sewer rate.
We don't need any formal action. We need any formal action. We don't need any formal action, we need any formal action, it's us.
I, I just need to, uh, there I am.
A motion to approve the exemptions.
Motion to approve those.
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Okay, um, anything else from Quer?
No, at this time.
Okay. Um, under new business, we have, is it three applications or?
I, so far, just one official. Other people are saying that they're going to apply, but we've only received one. And I sent that to all of you, I believe, on Friday, just so you're familiar with it. Um, so tonight, all we have to do is set a date for the public hearing for the variance application, um.
Sorry, I mean, any idea if the other two are gonna actually apply for a variance?
I, well, you might know.
It'd be nice to go in that one night, one day.
I, I know of one at a time.
But don't we also have a requirement?
Like soon, or not soon?
To do it within a certain amount of time for one day.
By the, they're going to make a, uh, by the twelve, the next four.
Don't we try to make our decision meeting starting that time of the public hearing?
Just that mean we could do one public hearing, set two public events, yeah.
Yeah, it would make sense.
Just seems kind of fair to, you know, set these sooner rather than later not have people wait, but.
So, do you wanna set it, I mean, um, Yakavides?
Yakavides.
Louis and Andrea that bought, um, the nail place across from McDonald's.
Yeah.
They are asking for a variance.
That place needs a lot of work.
They, they, I thought, for the way they said they dropped about a half million dollars in it, in it, and yet, they were unaware of some of the fire damage.
They have, or they will.
They have.
They have.
There was fire damage that wasn't disclosed when they sold the property, when they purchased the property.
Nowadays, it's more, you're gonna fly, like, some shit.
But money paid, you're still, we deserve.
Do you know how soon, because.
Yeah, they're in the process of, so.
Filling out things.
Yeah. Um, why don't we schedule it, wow, schedule for, I don't know.
Why don't we just schedule it for a work session?
A work session, or?
We should probably take a form, where we can take a formal action to it.
Yeah, I agree, yeah. Well, so. I thought we would do it like two weeks from now, at four thirty, before our, um, regular board meeting.
Regular.
Janet seemed to think it's better to do it on a separate night. She thought that it might go too long, and, but I can't imagine this'll go so long. It's pretty straightforward, we already have the information, I'm sure they're, and, I mean, again, this is a test case, it's our first one. Um, they're gonna come, I, I assume his attorney will come, state your case, you'll ask your questions. And we don't make a decision that night, we have thirty days to make a decision. So, but it's up to you guys, whatever you're comfortable with.
I was gonna bet we could do two of them in a thirty minute period, if they're just collecting information and asking questions, wouldn't you agree?
Yes.
Prior to a meeting?
That's what I'm thinking.
When do you have to put the notice out?
So, I would, I would put the notice out right now, and then I could always put a second notice out if we have a second one, you know, like, I would say we could do this for like four thirty. And then if you're, if in the next few days, I think it needs like at least five days, I believe, right?
The public notice?
Yeah. Yeah. So, we still have a little bit of time. If, if that second one shows up in the next few days, and that, then we just do one this time.
Okay.
If, if that works well, we consider it.
Yep.
Four thirty on the sixteen.
Do we need to make that a formal motion, or just do it?
No, I don't, I don't believe so. You know, I could just.
So, we're all about that.
I have your standard approval, I can just put that in the paper and put it out there.
Public, I get hers into.
Yeah, if she gets in the next couple of days, then we can.
Andrea.
Oh, no.
Andrea. But then we'll have to give it some thought, we need more time too.
We do.
We have one already, you're talking about second person, you're talking about third person.
Yeah.
No, there's not a second person.
No, no.
Okay, yeah.
There's not a third.
Okay, so four thirty on the sixteen, public hearing, I will put it out in the papers and.
I mean, it isn't the end of the world, that we needed ten more minutes, we couldn't go past five o'clock, and we're in the board meeting at five-ten, so. Okay. Okay, I'm good with that, everybody else?
Okay.
Let's see, I'll be here.
Yes, I think it's, oh, we figure away the whole week in Greece, but that week, I believe you will be here.
Which is the sixteen, right? Yes, I'm here, very good. Okay, anything else, um, under new business? Okay, under old business, I'd just like to remind everybody that Village Cleanup Day is May fourteen.
Yep.
Any other details we should throw out, and can we put that on our website?
Uh, I'm sure I could put it on the website, the Facebook page, rain date is May twenty-first. Um, but, and people check in, register at the beach house at nine AM that day. Um, but pretty much same thing as there are you, they'll get garbage bags, they'll be sent to a location, and that's it.
And thank you to Andrea and her sister for organizing this every year. Okay, um. Hmm, trying to read my own writing. Eight, seven, and a half.
Is it about Dimitri?
Yes. Oh, yes, yes, thank you. I did a really good job spelling it, mate. Um, I don't know if you've heard, but Dimitri has, I think, we talked to the town, and they wanted to put a collection box here for a list of items that they hope to collect and send to Ukraine. And we have that also. If you approve of that, we can, um, have me to put that on the village website and Facebook page. And I don't, I believe you probably could give money, but this is more.
Yeah, he has a very specific list of items he wants, so I could put that list out there. He's, he's accepting donations over at USA Luge, and Lori has agreed to accept them here in Dublin, so we'll just put the information out there.
Nothing we need to vote on again, it's just, it's just in there.
No. Just, just a nice community thing, deadline is May sixteen for that.
Okay, and then, uh, the other mayoral, mayoral item is, did you know I got an email last week on Thursday inviting myself to the White House along with the Olympic athletes from Beijing?
You invited yourself to the White House? It's like, I, I don't know, I got, well, I didn't realize, so, you know, horrible, the mayor, like, that's.
No, I got an email inviting me to the, to the White House, and, um, also a guest, and I, I have accepted. And I am planning to bring Trusty Kelly along with me, and I just need a motion for, for approving us to go. We looked into train, we thought about driving, and the most economic thing to do was to fly. And we found a motel room fifteen minutes from the Capitol. Basically, going to go down on Tuesday, be there the next morning for a forty-five minute ceremony, come right back. It's gonna be a flying trip.
And go straight to NCOM.
And go right to NCOM, that's right.
I'll move with the addition of, uh, mandatory M and Ms with the White House logo, go back for all.
And.
And, or, and. For the board members.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. Uh, any commissioner reports?
Yes, um, a reminder that on Friday, the virtual presentation on the STR, um, the STR, I guess, whatever the land use code is done, the presentation regarding, um, suggestions on how things can change, asking for public input, so that is a virtual presentation, it is a PowerPoint, um.
One time.
Three minute?
Five o'clock.
Okay, so that's gonna conflict for us with the Fireman's Bankrupt. And I assume that's an, an open invitation to the board, is it or not?
It is, it is an open invitation, but it's also being recorded, so they can go to Anita to ask for the link if they miss it. And I have the draft, it's gonna be updated on Wednesday. Um, it's the fifth, so it's Thursday, it's not, you'll be at NCOM.
Yeah, cool. It's like, so watch the recording.
Yes, it's still what.
Who's providing the link?
Um, it will either be Dean or, uh, Kate Thompson.
Okay.
You can, or Lori Fitzgeralds.
Yeah.
So, that's the presentation leading up to the actual physical presentation that will be at the school on Saturday, the fourteenth, May.
May.
May, next week, Saturday, the fourteenth, which conflicts with Cleanup Day from ten to twelve, and then Monday from five thirty to seven thirty in the school cafeteria. Where just like the Kamoyne Study, you had that walk-around where you went to a, a placard, and you put a yellow sticky note. It's the same scenario, trying to get the public's input on their, their perception and their feelings on STRs.
At the high school.
At the high school cafeteria. But it, it, it will be who view to watch the virtual presentation.
Yes, so we know all the players and all the talks.
Right.
Very good. And as far as the Fireman's Bankrupt goes, that, that is open to the board, isn't it?
I got it, yeah, everyone, yeah, we're all signed.
Just to mention, that is this Friday at, Greg Wood.
Yep. Six.
Okay. So, yeah. Um, anything else from commissioner reports?
I just wanna, I, I don't know if we've had a board meeting since the snowstorm. Wanted to thank all the departments, they were amazing, the snow came down, and it was heavy. And they were, it was, I was like, it was one of those, there, you can pick any day of the week to be proud of village employees.
Especially when you look to the state roads, right?
Yes, but it was just, at this particular, this particular storm, they were really on top of, from the highways, the water, to the electric, the whole.
We have good people. Uh, yeah, I would second what Jason said as well, and thank you to all of them, all of you, behind the scenes. Okay, anything else from commissioner reports? I guess you've heard what's going on in the waterline, we keep hitting big rocks. And that's what has us not down to Legion by now, but we're hoping that we stop running into larger rocks.
The Adirondacks, it's odd.
And, and I learned today that we have the possibility of running into trees that were dropped and buried underneath the road.
Fun.
Yeah.
Apparently, when they did this road, they raised it, and they just threw whatever they had, so they cut trees, they just laid them in there and filled over it.
Like, they've done waterline work before and run into a tree stump, which I thought was quite comical and interesting, but could pose a, then later on.
When they did that, when they did that, I wish they would have put a little time capsule and said, you're welcome. I'm, I'm clearing all this out, if you're gonna do any work.
Like, count the rings, how many, uh.
They did a power plant that dug through some of it.
Oh, yeah?
And all the mills that were.
Oh, yeah.
That was right at the base of the dam, right?
Yeah.
It's interesting what you find there underneath the street.
But trying to think, other than that, I mean, it's, it's what we said, I think there's two crews of blue spruce here working, and then you've been up to see the mid-park decks.
Some nice.
Beautiful, yeah. And so, that's two of the crews, then you've got the crew here, and you've got the crew up there. And despite the weather, they're doing the best they can, weathering the rocks. Good.